I would like to call the special meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, February 25th, 6:00 PM. invocation will be by Pastor Francisco Gonzalez from M.C.S. Sherry?
Let us pray. Eternal of me, we have your presence among us and also we have your guidance, your wisdom, and we ask the blessing over everybody here and over the city of Florisville. Blessed also the mayor, the council, and in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
We have established forum, Councilman Lemon, Councilwoman Castillo, Councilman Littler, and Councilman Rodriguez. Would anyone else stand for the U.S. pledge of allegiance to the Constitution?
I am the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I am of Texas, I pledge allegiance to you, Texas, one state under God, one individual.
At this time, do we have any citizens' comments? Yes, ma'am?
There are a couple of things. When I look at the qualifications to hold a special meeting, it requires any two elected officials, and I see on the agenda only your name. So could you please disclose to us who the other councilperson is and why?
Councilman Sherry Castillo.
Okay, why wasn't her name included on the agenda?
I can take that either way. The agenda items on here are for the individuals sponsoring that agenda item, not the special meeting as a whole.
Okay.
And so those only require one of the elected officials. There actually isn't a place on here for the vote for who is sponsoring the calling of the special meeting.
Okay, thank you. I also would like to address Mayor Garza. I continue to be hopeful, optimistic, that this new city council and you can serve as an example of what it means to be the voice of its citizens and to represent the Florisville residents in a responsible, informed, and honorable way. I know for a fact that many eyes are on us in looking to you to be the leaders in effectively handling Florisville's financial problems. I am, however, puzzled by the obvious lack of continuity and resolve to address and stand united in your mission to represent the citizens of Florisville. The efforts to quiet or perhaps I should say control Jim Miller's provocative but necessary questions is painfully evident. I do not know if this is a result of personal insecurity by some, a personal hidden agenda, or does Jim just make some of you uncomfortable with his questions and knowledge? Whatever the reasons are, I continue to attend these meetings so that I can be informed, and as a Wilson County resident, I intend to hold every one of you accountable for your decisions and actions. I am asking all of you, not just Jim Miller, to ask the hard questions and demand the answers you and the Florisville residents deserve. Should you not be familiar with the accounting, business aspects of running a city, then educate yourselves. Jim's voice is not the only one we should be hearing. We all celebrated the swearing-in of this new city council and new mayor. I hope we did not celebrate in vain. I sincerely hope we did not trade in the male version of Mayor Tehada for a female version. Do the right thing for God, for your country, and for Florisville. Work together.
Thank you. Now, we're going to go on to item number one, presentation and possible action. Would you like to refer that to the legal counsel?
Yes, thank you, ma'am. Item 1A is a formal complaint disclosure, and this is, there has been a formal complaint filed by a member of the city staff against a member of the city council, and so for the openness and transparency of governance, this is to be read into the official record and the minutes of the city, and so I refer back to the mayor.
Thank you. Okay, this is a letter dated February 14th, 2013, to myself, reference Councilman Jim Miller. Dear Mayor Garza, pursuant to the Charter of the City of Florisville, Texas, Section 3, the City Council, subsection 3.008, City Council, not to interfere in appointments, which states, neither the City Council nor any of its members shall direct the appointment of any person to office by the city manager or by any of his subordinates. Except for the purpose of inquiry, the City Council and its members shall deal with the administrative services solely through the city manager, and neither the City Council nor any member thereof shall give orders to any subordinate of the city manager, either publicly or privately. And/or pursuant to the amended employment agreement effective October 1, 2012, through September 30, 2015, per October 4, 2012, Florisville City Council Agenda Item 4A, which states, this amended agreement is entered into by and between the City of Florisville, Texas, City, and Andy Jocelyn, Jocelyn, effective October 1, 2012, and amends and supersedes the previous employment agreement between the parties effective October 1, 2011. Number three, Duties B, Section 4, Subsection 4.01D, duties of the city manager include, which states, the City Council shall not interfere in the city manager's internal administration, hiring, and execution of his personal duties as provided herein. City Manager Andy Jocelyn deems Councilman Jim Miller in violation of the above-mentioned statutes and agreements. As such, the purpose of this letter is to file a formal complaint against Councilman Jim Miller. Having received complaints of the above-mentioned violations in a constant and aggressive manner thus constituted in a hostile work environment created by Councilman Jim Miller, from the City of Florisville Comptroller Laura Fadens, City Secretary Sherry Pollak, and Permits Clerk Cindy Nichols, City Manager Andy Jocelyn prays for relief from Mayor Diana Garza, and the remaining members of the City Council. Witnesses agreed to provide statements and supporting documents. Number two, having received further information about ethical behavior by Councilman Jim Miller from City of Florisville Susturian Board Members, FDC Board Member Jason Tally, FDC Board President David Stroger, and 4A Vice President Melissa Popple, City Manager Andy Jocelyn prays for relief from Mayor Diana Garza, and the remaining members of the City Council. Witnesses have confided in the office of the city manager and subsequently have refrained from engaging in unapproved council/manager-directed activity. Number three, having received further information about ethical behavior by Councilman Jim Miller from Health Insurance Agent Jason Tally, Independent Auditor Pat Wagner, Financial Advisor Victor Kadova Jr., City Manager Andy Johnson prays for relief from Mayor Diana Garza, and the remaining members of the City Council. Witnesses have confided in office of the city manager and subsequently have refrained from engaging in unapproved council/manager-directed activity. Number four, having personally received disparagingly abusive and threatening emails by Councilman Jim Miller, family and friends of City Secretary Sherry L. Pollak, confiding in her that Councilman Miller was making disparaging and inappropriate comments about City Manager Andy Jocelyn, and in more than one discussion insisted that City Manager Andy Jocelyn was going to be replaced due to his inability to do his job. The comments were made at the Wilson County Stock Show and the Wilson County Show Barn during the show, January 23rd to 26th, 2013. City Secretary Sherry Pollak also was distressed that personal issues that occurred with her outside of her job were being discussed by Councilman Miller with her family members and felt it was very inappropriate. In direct conflict of the above-mentioned violations, City Manager Andy Jocelyn prays for relief from Mayor Diana Garza and the remaining members of the City Council. With sincere gratitude, Andy Jocelyn, City Manager, City of Florisville.
Just a question.
This isn't a discussion. It's just a presentation, so as we have the point of order, that's simply a presentation of a complaint.
All right. Will I be provided with a copy of this complaint?
Yes. This is the formal entry of the complaint so that we can formally let Mr. Jocelyn know the complaint has been entered, and then after this, the complaint will be issued.
Okay, and then what?
And then it's up to the council, the next meeting, as I have it perceived.
Is this public record as of right now?
Yes, it's entered into the minutes of this meeting.
Thank you.
What options are available to the council?
Well, that's something that'll be discussed. It's not part of this presentation item.
Okay, on to one, B, Charter infractions and remedies as of today. Legal counsel will explain.
Yes, thank you, ma'am. Under the city charter, no member of the city council can appoint themselves to a board or a committee, and the way that this was done to establish the audit committee was there were three members that were appointed, that were nominated and appointed in a motion that was voted on by the entire council, and so to clear up the charter questions on there that some had raised, we figured it was best to go through. By operation of the charter, those appointments would be rendered non-employed, and so you'll see coming up here in a minute, those appointments can just be redone and nominate second, move to accept the nomination format individually for each of the three members with a member nominated refusing themselves from the vote, just to make it so that nobody can have the appearance of having nominated themselves.
Okay. With that being said, then I hereby remove Councilman Miller, Councilman Rodriguez, and Councilman Castillo from the audit committee according to Charter Section 11.01. Now on to new business, consideration and action to appoint members to the audit committee.
Point of procedure? The mayor's administrative head. The council is the only ruling body, I believe, that can remove anybody from any appointed. The mayor cannot do that.
This isn't the mayor doing it. It's by operation of the charter because the appointments were rendered non-employed by the terms of the Charter, Section 11.01.
The charter says that the power invested in the council, not the mayor.
It's the operation of the charter. It's not an action of the council to remove them. It's by automatic operation of the charter, much like a concurrent running provision where you can't run for one office while holding another. You're automatically removed. It doesn't require actions of the council.
Then I think we need to strike the mayor's comments that said by, or her last comments that motivated Mr. Jones' comment that she, as the mayor, in accordance with the charter, removed these three people from the audit committee.
And if you like for the semantics, it would be the charter, by operation of the charter, the three members are removed from the audit committee.
And if we could just amend the minutes appropriately.
Please, sir.
Mayor, I would like to make the first point.
Okay.
I would like to appoint Eric Rodriguez.
Okay, do I have a second?
I have a second.
Okay. I have a motion for Eric Rodriguez, second by, I'm sorry, motion made by Sherry Castillo, second by John Guerrero, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four zero.
Right, it can be three, three.
Oh, you can't vote. Okay, now, can I have a motion to appoint the second member?
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Jim Miller to the audit committee.
Okay, I have this motion made by Eric Rodriguez to appoint Mr. Miller. May I have a second?
I have a second.
Okay, second by John Guerrero, Councilman. All in favor?
Aye.
Obey.
Obey.
It's, it is.
Two zero one.
Two zero one.
Well, because there are four members, it is two abstains, so it's two zero two, and it's the mayor on the charter.
Okay.
Because it's not a full, a whole.
Okay. Then I want to appoint Mr. Miller. So then that would be two?
Three and zero.
Three and zero.
That's the rule we have on now?
We now have the same numbers.
There's only been two appointments.
Right, there's still one more.
I should say one more.
Okay, may I have a motion?
That's Mr. Eric Jones?
No, no, it's the only ones that have been removed here in the county.
So shares on the memory.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Ms. Sherry Castillo to the audit committee.
I have a motion, may I have a second, to appoint Ms. Castillo to the audit committee?
Second.
Mr. Guerrero, seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Obey. Motion carries three. Okay. Thank you for helping clarify that. Now, we're going to go on to item in the new business, B, Consider and Action to amend Council Directive Number Five, Section 1.01, as to conform to the Charter, and again, I'll refer to our legal counsel.
Yes, thank you, ma'am. On here, where in 1.01, previously has passed the Council Directive authorizing Audit Committee to approve the formatting requirements of the monthly reports from the city manager. That's something where the Audit Committee has very distinct and approved charter provisions that dictate what the Audit Committee's scope is. On here, after reviewing everything, and especially in light of how the city staff left the formatting requirements going through the city manager, it was felt that legally it would be best for the City Council as a whole to approve the formatting and not just the Audit Committee. It could be presented to the Audit Committee for a recommendation to come back to the City Council on the format. However, it seems with the three members of Audit Committee that's adding in that it's not necessary. So as our recommendation to just simply amend that, agreed, the city comptroller and city manager shall immediately begin working to establish a uniform format for reporting and shall present such to the City Council for consideration of approval or modification at the City Council meeting following the adoption of this Council Directive.
Okay. Can I have a motion on this?
Actually, can I ask a couple of questions?
Yes, ma'am.
When the first statement in this Council Directive is proactive compliance with financial reporting per charter and contract terms, that leads one to believe that the requirements already exist, but yet the last statement in this, in order to be given an adequate period of time to which implement the procedures contained in this Council Directive, and goes on, would lead one to believe that these are new requirements, and in reading that, continuing on in this last statement, during the second regular council meeting in May 23rd, on May 2013, following the financial reports review, at such time a review of the implementation and effect of this directive shall be included as part of the evaluation. Part of the issue here in this Council Directive was to alleviate some of the financial reporting challenges that lacked in the past and that are requirements of the charter and requirements of the contract. I'm uncomfortable with this wording in that it comes across as a new requirement, not an existing requirement, where performance could be evaluated, not compliance with the new directive.
And I can sort of understand where you're coming from on there. The proactive compliance with financial reporting per charter and contract terms, it is already in there that this reporting must be done. What, the purpose of that section, in order to be given an adequate period of time, da-da-da, is to establish a uniform formatting requirement because there isn't one currently existing, and to comply with the terms of that, something does need to be developed, and that's why this was passed in its original form, and this is simply being amended here. Now, as for the issues of that, it, as far as I know, hasn't been brought up prior to this new council coming on, and that's why the Council Directive Number Five is originally passed, was to start making sure that this process must follow in compliance with the charter and the contract.
Here on my motion.
Okay, I have a motion by Sherry Castillo. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Second by Councilman Guerrero, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries...
I'm sorry, was that a motion to approve?
Yes, yeah, to amend.
To approve the amendment? Okay.
To amend, yes.
I move to amend the Council Directive Number Five, Section 1.01, as to conform to the Charter.
Okay. Now, we're going to go on to new business, item C, Consideration and Action to Adopt Resolution 2013-001 on prohibiting contact between elected officials and professional service providers except through authorized channels. Again, I've heard it to the...
And this was an issue that arose out of, actually, back in 2009. The council passed under the former city manager a directive that the only person who could contact legal counsel was the city manager. No city council members, no city staff. It was solely limited to the city manager. And of course, there hasn't been conflict by multiple people in pass, and so it was felt that a revision of this and some issues that arose subsequent to looking at this matter be addressed at the same time. On here, it's, again, with the interest of transparency of governance and the elected officials all having access to the same information, it was discussed that any council member can bring a question to a professional service provider, attorneys, engineers, et cetera, if they're under contract with the city. To make sure that all the elected officials are provided with the same question and response to make sure everybody has the same information, it was recommended that this all go through one central point. The obvious is the city manager, the city secretary, any dealing with preparing packets for council and addressing general council questions was also a logical choice. For items that are either, if either the city manager or city secretary are not available, or for items that the council would like to keep solely to the council, we did recommend the mayor as a usual non-voting member and being the figurehead, if you will, of the council to be going to contact, then it does request to be delivered. And so if you'll see in the drafted resolution on here, there is a requirement that as the, whether it's the city manager, city secretary, or mayor receives the question and answer, it is immediately transmitted to all other elected officials on there, so that everybody has access to the same information and same everything going into making decisions on the council.
Is that, is that being, so what's being written in 2009 is actually being revised?
Yes, and in 2009, it was written so broadly that, you know, if there's a permits question and somebody comes in with a permits question and they want to work on development, the permit individual could not contact legal with questions on there or anything like that. It was just left, everything had to go through the city manager. There were no alternatives put in place. There was nothing else, and it was simply, all correspondence with legal had to go through the city manager.
So now everything has to go through the manager? Or the city secretary, if the manager is not available? Or either, or?
I believe it's written as either or.
Because the way I read it is that it's in his absence.
Yeah, and on here, it's got the city manager and city secretary shall be designated as the sole points of contact for their laying of inquiries to receive information from providers of professional services to the city on behalf of the elected officials of the city. And then if the city manager or city secretary are unavailable, then legal can be there.
I just to clarify, it's not that we can't that legal, we'd be charged?
Well, everybody would get charged anyway if you pick up on a call personally. Well, I can't say everyone because there are some discretion with our bill, but this just, it doesn't do anything to change the amount of contact. It just simply says that should you, Councilman Guerrero, have a question, then everyone is aware of the question on the council, and the answer that you get is also shared with everybody on the council.
But doesn't seem to have been the practice in the past.
Right, and that's where, again, the interest of openness and transparency, that way there are no, nobody has access to information that everybody else has not.
Given the presentations made tonight, I think this introduces some unique challenges to the council. Would it be more effective to mandate that should council, a council member, ask the question, would that question also be distributed amongst the entire council? And when that response is given, it is given to the entire council, in lieu of adding an administrative step to this that allows for the opportunity of questions to be interpreted or just an additional time step in this that may or may not be necessary?
That's a, that's not a legal question. That's a policy question, so I can't address that.
But I would address that to the council. I would say that I believe that we are all professional and able enough that should a question arise and it be needed to besought of legal counsel, that when that question is asked, the entire council is included, and that's a council policy, in lieu of establishing a resolution and adding more work to city staff.
Mayor, point of information. Isn't there another reason why we're doing it, and that is because we're trying to save money so that people are not constantly calling all the service providers on their own, as has been done in the past, and so this way we're controlling the expenses?
I don't think we've, we've asked for the numbers on that council amendment as to, of the breakdown of legal expenses, who asked the question but have not seen any report on that. That was one of the questions asked of the Audit Committee when city staff made this recommendation on limiting access to professional services, was to provide the documentation that supported that, but to date, I have yet to see anything that says that because Jim Miller asked a question or Councilman John Guerrero asked a question, that we've seen excessive legal fees.
Mr. Miller, I think we can look at history and assume that that might happen, and we can also provide the records since inception of this council, or this fiscal year.
We've asked for those records, Councilwoman, and we have yet to be seen.
They've been asked, they haven't been...
Excuse me, I have to finish with this.
I would like to make a motion.
Okay, and a motion?
To adopt the Resolution 2013-001 on prohibiting contact between elected officials and professional service providers except through authorized channels.
And a motion?
Can we discuss this? Well, we never just did, we're still on the motion here. Because I put it on the agenda in 2009 for not to be having this problem about spending money, when Ottawa is used to go through Louis Rosenberg's for any little thing, and it never worked out because Mayor Tehada still ran up a big bill, supposedly we have a $63,000 bill somewhere around here, when I guess who authorized it? Had to authorize it through the city manager. But at the same time, I had to go to my lawyer today to give some advice, and I think it's kind of, I put it on the agenda in 2009. I think I left it on. People work out, I don't know if we have it in place, and I didn't get it from the car. But I believe the way I had to go talk to my lawyer about legal advice about the city... But I believe, the way I had to go talk to my lawyer about legal advice about the city, I think we need to, if I have a problem, I need to talk to the city attorney myself, and I think I'm just as important as a mayor to ask the question to the, it might be about the City Manager, so I'm not going to say, hey, I want to go talk to the attorney about you, so I believe, back in 2009, I wanted to cut that spending, we still spend $330,000 on legal fees, and I think that a city official should be able to raise, give a phone call and ask the question to an attorney, and I believe with maybe amending that, that those procedures with the council in place too.
And Councilman, we're on this, one of the things that we were discussing, this was more an effort to ensure that the entire council was aware of the question, or that the entire council was aware of the answer. And what I proposed was a council policy that said if we asked a question of the city attorney, we let the rest of the council know that we asked that question, and when we receive the answer from the council, legal council, we let the rest of the council know what the answer is, then everybody's on the same page. But I agree with you that limiting access to it is going to be challenging to this council.
I think we could find a happy medium if we, if we could revise it to put a limit on, on the amount of phone calls. You know, we, the amount of calls made per, per council member.
Coming from the client side of it, that gets a little tricky when you put a hard number cap on the number of calls, because it could be an issue that requires, you know, you got a question, you call me, I call somebody else, I call you back, you have, you know, clarification points, then I call back, does that count against the cap? Does it count against that? I mean.
Well, it's all part of this, the same specific question. You know, if a question is specifically addressed, it should be addressed as one specific question, or as one particular phone call. If they ask my questions in a phone call, you know, then all these questions would be addressed, as well as as being, you know, a communication issue with all the council members stating this count, this phone call was made at this particular time addressing these questions, and that way everyone is in, is in tune with what was being addressed, and what, you know, everybody's in line with, with what's going on with council.
You know, Councilman, I, although I would like to say, yeah, putting a limit or a cap would be a great idea on that, I think the solution to the cap is the monitoring that we've been talking about within the Audit Committee that looks at totals spent on legal expenses compared to what was budgeted, totals that have been paid on professional fees compared to what was budgeted, and as trend lines develop, we make adjustments, you know, and we have no evidence yet that says because council is asking questions is the cause of its ornament legal fees.
Well, it's obvious that it's not just, I mean, it's lawsuits that have been, that have been costly, not, not individual phone calls to address issues, specific issues to council, or to, or to attorney.
Not even lawsuits, Councilman, I mean, we've spent a tremendous amount on annexation, on planning and zoning, on engineers' questions, and this goes on and on.
Let me put everything else except the questions, you know, to, to kind of clarify things. You know, I'm not specifically stating that just lawsuits, but everything else that has, everything else but the council questions.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but this whole issue here is all about not using the back door. It is going directly to who the person who's supposed to be knowing about this, so if y'all, any of you have any questions for any of the attorneys, you just need to let Andy know, Andy, I need to talk to the attorney, and Andy will say, okay. It's not that you're being told not to talk to the attorney, it's just to be aware so that everybody, and like you said, that everybody gets reported. We don't have an issue with that.
Mayor, that was in place in 2009, and how did Mr. Tejada get to talk to the attorney for so many hours at $400 an hour? How did that come about?
You're not responsible for, not responsible.
Well, I'm not responsible, but it's always been in place since 2009.
Okay, but now lately it's been.
Well, I'm not for, I'm not for a city council, but I think it's over Mr. Jocelyn as a City Manager, over the city, and I think that we need to be, if we need to ask some legal advice from an attorney, I think we should have an open door.
As elected officials representing the citizens of this community, and if we are going to make decisions that impact this entire community, access to legal counsel cannot be limited.
What if we table this item so we can all discuss it, and everybody come with a?
I don't see any need to table this, Mayor.
I think what we're doing is talking about audit internal audit controls. We've talked a lot about them, this is one of those issues, or we need to have a.
So somebody make a motion, make a motion.
There's a motion on the floor.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilman Cherry Castillo. May I have a second? You don't have a second, so a motion is failed.
Mayor, I make a motion not to adopt Resolution 2013-001 on prohibiting contact between elected officials and professional service providers except through authorized channels.
A second.
I have a motion by Councilman Miller, second by Councilman Rodriguez, not to adopt. May I have?
All in favor?
All in favor, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Obstain, hard out.
Motion carries three, two, zero, two.
And council, I will put the motion that Mr. Maronis was talking about back in 2009, then does remain in effect because it has never been overturned, and so the City Manager is still the only one who can contact legal.
We can amend.
It's not the action item here, it can be amended at the next council meeting.
We can bring it back and put that up, the ones that are authorized.
Can we go with that? Point of information, if we have one in place, why are we doing another one?
I just was made to amend it so that include the transparency item, and also to ensure that city staff, if necessary, could contact legal. Right now, it's made so that everybody and everything has to go through Mr. Jocelyn.
So instead of a CNA, should it not have just been information revised or reiterated?
It was already in place.
It would have been just an action.
To revise the current directive, or resolution, because this resolution was an attempt to revise that. Does that leave that current resolution off the table?
It leaves it in effect.
No. Does it leave it off the table for action, because this resolution was an attempt to revise that resolution?
Well, the CNA was to adopt this resolution, not to discuss and revise the previous resolution.
But this resolution was a revision of the previous resolution, and the discussion was about the previous resolution and how this resolution would change it.
Right.
Can I ask you, can we amend to include the council on this?
Not on the agenda.
Well, we can put it back on the agenda.
Yes, to me. Here it is, 6:40, this meeting is adjourned.